Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated public works team members is materially influenced by the citizens' understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Therefore, we use a select board of the town of Concord, Massachusetts to hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through May 26, 2018 as Concord Public Works Week. We call upon all Concordians to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing for public work services and to recognize the contributions that Concord Public Work makes every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, proclaiming this seventh day of May 2018. We have an extension of hours, Salt Box Kitchen, May 9, 9:00 PM, Last Call at 8:30 PM, 84 Commonwealth Avenue, Sunday Entertainment Licenses, Emerson Umbrella, May 13 and May 20, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, The Theater at 57 Old Road and 98th Corner. We have tour guide license renewals and silent fund camp scholarships. I believe that that is in the amount of $7,500 requested by the Concord Community Services. I believe, let's see, we have, if we get, a little later, we'll introduce the new tour guide licenses. If I see there are a number of people here or what, I'm assuming they're qualifying for that purpose, but that is the intent.
So I want to approve the consent agenda. That's right. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're ready for town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Acton Board of Selectmen approved the town's application for a special permit to construct a new water treatment facility at Nagard Pond. Took two and a half years to design and get through the permitting process. The decision went to record, I think, on May 1st, so the appeal period lasts 20 days, so we're waiting till May 21st to hear if there will be an appeal taken by Butters or other interested parties, but it's a cost of celebration, I think. The project's only at 50% design, so next we'll complete the design to get to 100%. Staff will appear before the Conservation Commission in Acton to address the fence near the brook, so we're moving forward. The part of the decision requires collaboration or conversation about regional water supply needs, so we'll participate in those discussions in good faith, but we can move forward according to the board's decision, so that's great news. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, there's a ribbon cutting ceremony this Friday at 3:30 in Acton at Narrow Park to celebrate the opening of Phase 2A, which is the Acton portion. Phase 2B is the bridge over Route 2. The designer, GPI Freeman Peterson Inc., is designing the bridge. They got the go-ahead to move to 100% design, so they'll be working on that and hope to submit it by about June 22nd, so that's working going forward. And Phase 2C is the Concord portion. D.W. White, the general contractor, has not announced when he will return to work, but many of the subs are working, so there is work going on, and we're asked to remind residents that the trail is not yet open, it's a construction site, and we're not supposed to be on the trail until it's completed. Under contract, D.W. White doesn't, D.H. White doesn't have to complete the project until next March. We hope they're finished this fall, but technically they don't have to have the trail completed until next March, but we're getting close. Senior Property Tax Reduction, there'll be an explanation of that by the assessors at Harvey Wheeler Building on tomorrow, May 8 at 1:00 PM, Harvey Wheeler Community Center. Anybody interested? It's a new program authorized by legislation that void file, and the assessors will help people apply for that property tax relief this coming fall to make eligible for it.
The deadline for application, September 1, I believe?
That's right. That's correct. September 1, 2018 is the deadline, so there's some time for people to apply, but the assessors are doing some outreach.
And the name of their platform?
And, yes.
It's a little difficult to hear with the traffic, so if we could, if we could all speak up, it'd be great. It'd be great to tell, "Thank you."
Okay. The work in the hearing room next door has not quite been completed, it's about another three weeks, but the tent has come down and the hearing room is now available for committee meetings, so the folk can resume meeting evenings in there. The two offices will house the Public Information Officer, Erin Stevens, and Kate Hanley, our Assistant Leading Director, they'll have some.
That looks great.
It's coming along nicely. The Public Works and Reuse Its drop-off swap-off day was Saturday, it was a beautiful spring day, a lot of people, and it was canceled last year at this time, the spring event was canceled, so perhaps there was things collecting in people's garages and basements, so it was 945 vehicles passed through, and so there was some traffic associated with that, both on Main Street and Lowell Road, but the police were there and helped the traffic as best they can, but there were some delays. And Reuse It and the Solid Waste folks were very pleased with the results, and most people said it was a good event despite the traffic. Assistant Light Plant Superintendent Chris Roy is taking a position, he's moving to Belmont, that's our law school for him. He'll be heading, he'll be heading the general manager of the Belmont Municipal Light Department, his last day is this Friday, so we wish him success. Cafe Nero is being reviewed by the Planning Board Tuesday night, excuse me, May 8, and then the CBA will hear the recommendations of the Planning Board on Thursday evening, and I think the staff have recommended approval of that project. It's committee appointment time, I do have a couple of people willing to serve on the Natural Resources Commission and the Public Works Commission. Personnel Board has said they're down one, possibly two positions, so there are some boys that are looking from.
And on Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, I got an email that they're looking for two.
And the CSEC has two or three.
Three, I think.
Three, I think, so a good time to get green carded.
I think I mentioned the Concord Housing Development Corporation last week.
That's right.
Two weeks ago.
And ZBAs.
So, and the ZBAs, sure. So, and terms expire on May 31st, so this is the time when, a good time to get your green card and volunteer.
I also have a number of, the cultural committees are coming in, and I think we're almost done in West Concord, but soon we'll have the Concord Center.
And lastly, just a few items that are coming on your upcoming agendas, on your next meeting on the 21st of May, Concord Housing Authority and this board will have a joint meeting to jointly fill the vacancy created by Ms. Escobedo's departure, so that's unusual, but we've done it once or twice before in the past, that's to fill an empty seat on the CHA board. And the dog hearing, the folks that were ordered to construct a fence to keep the dog contained on the yard did not do that in conformance with the board's orders, so they had letters sent to them requiring them to attend a meeting on 21st. And then Punkett Tasselet Parking, we'll have a discussion update on that. And then on June 4th, Verizon will revisit Verizon's request to locate cell facilities, cell tower facilities on town property, either at Emerson Umbrella or at Emerson Field with the Flagpole, or they've also been exploring some church properties, so that's on the agenda for watching for.
I believe, Andrew, that the notice of the nuisance dog issue was published in the newspaper is going to be?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Because I just want to make sure that you convey our thanks to council and public courts and the large department for the patience.
Listen, and they were grateful for you for attending all those hearings that went late into the night many times.
Well, I just want to remind everybody, we're not finished with the process yet, because we've talked about doing a public forum, and I think we should consider the timing on that and how it can affect this, because I think it's a good time, especially if we're going to get into regional water discussions, to make sure all of Concord understands what we're discussing.
I think that makes sense.
I think the thought was that we were waiting to see how the appeal process before we were going to proceed on that, but I agree.
Thank you.
Any questions? Now then, change of operation, Salt Box Kitchen, 84 Commonwealth Avenue. Mr. Elliott, would you like to?
Thank you.
Yes, you. You can make sure that that is near, there you go.
Ben Elliott, Salt Box Kitchen, 84 Comm Ave, like to request a change of hours from 7:00 AM opening to an 8:00 AM opening Monday through Saturday, and then a change of hours closing from 7:00 PM Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to an 8:30 PM Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. The closing times Thursday, Friday, and Saturday would remain the same, and we would still be closed Sunday.
The same being 9:30.
Correct.
How many of these is assigned with business, that you've been expanding evening hours?
I think so.
The question is, how many of the special requests that we get to Salt Box Kitchen, most of them are to do with?
Extension of hours.
Extension of hours.
Well, that depends on how many people want to host an event?
Right.
At Kitchen later than we're licensed to be open, so I don't know. Hopefully quite a few.
Oh, but that's no effect at all.
Right, right, so I don't know, remains to be seen, but yeah, I think that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday nights, just by staying open an hour later, will accommodate people who want to come for dinner. It's a little confusing, we close at 7, it's kind of an odd time to close, so there we are.
Good addition to the.
The alcohol service, we just remain, it's just started at 11:00 AM.
Yes.
Totally closed.
Totally closed, it's the same as the Congress. Just.
Yeah, and so last call, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday would be adjusted an hour as well, so last call would be a half an hour before closing still.
The other questions? Do you have any motion?
Sure. I move to approve the request to amend the hours of operation for Salt Box Kitchen located at 84 Commonwealth Avenue. The new hours of operation are closed on Sunday, Monday through Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM, Thursday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 9:30 PM. Alcohol service to begin at 11:00 AM and so closing, well, half an hour before.
Right, right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great night.
Next item on the agenda is the request to fire town cannon, Concord Independent Battery. I don't know if we have somebody there, we do have a couple of letters regarding that. Letter dated May 1st from James Finnegan, President of the Concord Independent Battery Association, and a letter from Brigadier General Francis Magnum, Assistant Adjunct General of the Army, Massachusetts National Guard. In his letter, he says, "As an expatriate, in quote, 'Concordian,' I have watched the battery at the Old North Bridge on Patriot's Day since I was a child, and was deeply moved by the battery's salute to my uncle, Master Sergeant Al Mangburn, at his funeral this past November." A nice letter, I thought. I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions.
So this is more than a request to fire, the transport and the carriage to Boston.
Yes, I believe it's participation in the USS Constitution underway tribute to the Vietnam veterans, which will take place on May 18, 2018.
The board has a lengthy agreement with the Independent Battery governing training requirements and other aspects of operations, which includes seeking a town permission before moving the guns out.
And they have special equipment to do, to move something as?
And have done this in the past, on different occasions, so.
Sounds like a good idea.
I'm ready for a motion.
So I would move to approve the Concord Independent Battery's request to fire the town cannons at the USS Constitution's underway tribute to Vietnam veterans on May 18, 2018.
The second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We now have new tour guide licenses, Jane Gordon. Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome.
Thank you very much.
Could you just sort of fill us in?
Sure.
Introduce those.
We have nine new people who have gone through, completed all the requirements for being licensed tour guides, and they've done a multi-session course that started at the end of February and just ended up mid-April, and they've done all sorts of projects that demonstrate their proficiency at interpreting our Concord landscapes and historic sites, both in oral and in written form, so I would heartily congratulate them all, and I'd like to read their names and have them stand up if you so approve. And they're behind me here, Carolyn Berry-Cop.
Great.
There's Carolyn. Sally Haney. Jessica Hone. Brenda Kelly, I don't believe is here, no. Charlie Ma, Charlie Chij Ma, who was born in Beijing and is a student at Middlesex School, high school student, has completed all of that and added wonderful context to our course, so he's not able to be here, but I would congratulate him as well.
I hope so.
Gerard Morocco.
Thank you.
Sarah Patton. Mary Wren Vander Willden. And Edward Tannen. This is our 2018 class of Concord Tour Guides.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I'm curious, how many of the new tour guides live in Concord, and how many come from other places? Because oftentimes you have people who are trained as tour guides from other places.
That's, that's correct, so you can tell everybody where you're from, and some people like Sarah may not live in Concord, but she certainly works in Concord as administrator of the Old Nance, so just go right around, starting with you.
Edward, I live in Carlisle, Mass, and I'm in the National Park.
He's a volunteer at the park?
Hi, Gerard, Jerry Morocco. I grew up in Newton, I live in West Roxbury, I come all the way out here. I also work at the National Park at Eastern National, and I'm a tour guide in Concord.
Thank you.
Mary Brenn Vander Willden, I live in Concord, I work in the Visitor Center in Concord, and will be working in the Robins House as well.
Right on.
I'm Sarah, I'm the site manager at the Old Nance, and I live in Brookline, but you spend a lot of time here.
I'm Sally Haney, I live in Westford, and I volunteer at Mineman National Park.
Hi, I'm Jessica Hone, I'm from Shirley, and I work at the Visitor Center as well as the Robins House team.
Oh, great.
And I'm Carolyn Cop, and I live in Carlisle, and I did this for pure fun.
We really appreciate the time that it takes to train folks to be able to be educated tour guides, and for the volunteer time you put in to do, to act as the guide in our town.
Tourism is obviously a very big, important part of Concord, and having the tour guides enhances that greatly, so we're very appreciative.
Well, we appreciate all of your support.
How many different languages do the tour guides, do you have to deal with that?
Occasionally we do, but the whole idea of interpretation isn't necessarily interpretation from one language to another, it's more using physical objects and sites to get at meaning and significance.
In addition to thanking the new tour guides, thanks to your journey for your general work, to make sure that these folks in the room that can do this for us.
Oh, thank you very much. This is my 21st time in front of you all, and alas, my last, because I'll be moving, but yes, yeah, but it's been a real joy, I've loved it.
Well, you've made important contributions to the town, so.
Thank you.
Our best wishes for the next chapter.
Thank you.
Those will be big shoes to fill.
But they will be filled, lots of talented people in this town.
Probably trained by you, so.
Ready for a motion?
So I move to approve the new tour guide licenses, as listed, as we just heard, and it's introduced to all of them, as it was just referred to.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so much, and you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
We're going to cancel your license.
We really do appreciate your time, so take care. I have one, I'm sorry. We're back. How long have you been far away?
Carlisle, not that far. But they just walk. The next agenda is the scheduling of a special municipal election. Gary, why don't you?
We also have Rob Easton from the planning board, and Ray Concedine from the board of Health, I don't know if you want to get perspectives from them as well?
Sure.
That would be fine. More the merrier.
You even have thought about this subject more than you all.
Well, we had the benefit of having a discussion at our last planning board meeting, Rob and I and the other planning board members were there and heard from Alice Kaufman, our select board liaison, as to your desire to be enlightened, I guess, as to our thinking on the timing of a special election. And in the course of our discussion, we sort of were urging for earlier rather than later, because, I mean, basically the conclusion we came to, and Rob can back me up on this or elaborate further, but even if everything went ideally, and we came up with the ideal zoning for recreational sales of marijuana that we would like to see pass in a zoning article at a special town meeting, we can think of one scenario where everything goes perfectly and we meet the December 31st deadline, and any number of scenarios where things don't go well, and we could find ourselves December 31st without any zoning pass. The Attorney General might reject whatever language we adopt, whatever we adopt at a special town meeting might, or attempt, bring to a special town meeting might not pass, so even after we get to a special town meeting and hopefully have something, you know, there are scenarios where things could go wrong. So it just seemed to us that it would be far better for the town to schedule an election as soon as possible, to understand where we are with respect to the opt-out provision, and perhaps have an opportunity to move expeditiously to get zoning in place if we need to, and not have to worry about it if we.
So if the town vote did not go in favor of opting out, you would have sufficient time in that event to put zoning, we could have the special town meeting and presumably proceed.
I wouldn't use sufficient as a modifier, we have a fixed amount of time we have, and that timeline basically expires December 31, 2018, regardless of what happens when that special town election happens. I think what we're asking for is to strongly consider, the longer period of time we have, I think the better we can act within that period. I think the regulations exist are tremendously complex and burdensome on the town. You not only have the typical warranted zoning process, you have to have another special election after that process, so, you know, and this all has to be in place by 31 to protect the town, and as Gary says, it's not just retail establishment, it's all marijuana establishments, so that's both the retail, the growing, and the.
Laboratory.
Operations, and I think we would just like to have, we, the planning staff, planning board, like to have as much time as possible. I think to build on that, the amount of public awareness that was done through the board of health process, through the Article 30 process, the special town meeting, I think there's something to be said to maintain that momentum for an early town election, and get, and hear the voice of the town, and react to that. We prefer not to have a parallel process where the town's going to consider something in September, November, when in fact we'll have to start our process in, you know, pretty much immediately anyway, whether, regardless of when that election happens, we'd like to not, we'd like to respond to elections opposed to doing it.
Speaking for the board of health, without the benefit of knowing the timeframe, which just, I just discovered the other day, and hearing again tonight, we would have preferred to have a little bit longer time for educational purposes, but in light of the, what you've just heard, I think, and I can't speak for the board, but I'll speak for myself, I guess we would prefer to have, I would prefer to have more time to come up with proven bylaws that would protect the town should this fail at the ballot. Again, I'm not speaking for the board, but I'm, please speak in my own opinion on that.
So I just want to remind this board of our last conversation, we looked at all the options, and there were several, we could have, we could hold a special election early, we could hold a special election along with the primary vote, or we could do it during the state elections in November. And we were indecisive at that point, because you hadn't heard exactly what goes on, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to say what happens to happen when you write a bylaw. This is a public process, so there's engagement, there's public meetings, public hearing, then it goes to, if, once the bylaw is written and people are agreement and it got. Then it goes to, if, once the bylaw is written and people are agreement and it got pretty good review from the public hearing, it then has to go to a special town meeting in the fall. After, if it's approved at special town meeting, all these are qualified ifs most likely, but they're qualified ifs, it would then have to go to a townwide vote again. So there's a lot that has to happen in that short period of time. And if it weren't summer, when this would be beginning, when participation is much lower in the summer forthcoming public hearing meetings, that, you know, there's no great time. But I can understand the urgency to get moving and have a decision before the fall when time is really cramped because from September through December, it'd be a really squashed period of time. The other part is if they were to begin work, they could begin their work of developing regulations now. And if we're, and a moratorium was put in place at the townwide election later, they will spend hours and hours of their summertime and staff time. Although there are a lot of articles that we have to work back for this coming year and this comprises the amount of time that will be invested. You're right, it is incumbent upon the town that if we hold an election in June, to do a huge public outreach effort in the next 35 days, whatever the number of days are, so that people are aware not only of just the election date, but the issues around what they're voting on and why they're going to vote.
The other factor that we discussed at the last meeting was also the cost of the special election. The early one was the most expensive. We're not talking substantial money. I think the difference was the estimated cost for the June 12th is $13,500. If we did it on the September vote, it would be $6,675. And the November 6th, if it was with the state election, would be $10,835. Those are estimates, but I think pretty accurate estimates. But I'm kind of persuaded by the advantage of having an earlier decision to allow you all to, because I think your work is going to be critical in terms of if it comes to that, make sure we get it right.
It'll be important for us to bring out as many people as we can to vote, but one of the things we could consider was a vote in September or November would have probably greater voter participation because the other electors, but this is the only item on the agenda. It's sometimes difficult to have people come and vote their civic duty. So it's incumbent upon us to make that happen.
Right. So critical would be to find a date well before the end of school or at least before the end of school when families tend to disappear.
June 12th is a date.
Right.
And if school's still in, right?
I'm persuaded. I mean, our discussion last time was interesting, but we were missing, you know, critical information. I think without that information, our tendency was to do it later in a year despite the fact it gets a little nuts. But I'm like...
We were wise enough to wait.
No, I don't think that. We waited. So I'm persuaded too.
Any others? Linda, you have any?
No, that makes sense to me as well.
Can I just ask a procedural kind of point of words on September 14th? The audience, we're still okay with proper notification and time and all of that?
Just, just nearly.
Just here.
Perfectly.
Well, question. Ready for a motion?
Okay. So I move to call a special municipal election on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, for the purpose of prohibiting marijuana establishments as voted at the 2018 Annual Town Meeting under Article 30 with the language of the ballot question as follows, and this should be the same language that was used at town meeting. Shall this town adopt the following bylaw? Marijuana establishments, the operation within the town of Concord of any marijuana establishment as defined in the Massachusetts General Law, the new laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, including without limitation, a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business is prohibited. This prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana medical properties by a registered marijuana dispensary as defined in Section 4.3.9 of the new law. And a vote will be either yep or no.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot to do.
The statute requires, as you saw referenced, the council summary will be added. The statute requires town council to provide a summary. And that, we expect, will be delivered tomorrow.
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road, speaking for the League of Women Voters of Concord and Carlisle. I can't promise this, but we could certainly try to hold a forum on a first Friday in June. We weren't going to have one in June. We usually kind of end that in May. We thought we had had our last one. It may well be that this would be a way of helping to promote this. We could advertise it in our column, our monthly column. We could perhaps devote more time in that column to this issue than is usually, than we might usually. And so if, in collaboration with the town and information you would like to get out, I can see if I can win the board's approval to move forward on such an idea. So if that would help, let us know and we will try to be helpful.
I think that would be great.
I'd suggest talking to the Board of Health and the Planning Board as well.
We would, of course, do that. In fact, we will hope they would be present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, our next item is the vote under Article 18, allowing 17-year-olds to vote. I think there was a suggestion that perhaps the Select Board could write our legislators a letter urging their support for the measure. And I think the recommendation would be for you all to authorize the chair.
Good suggestion. Why the chair?
I...
I may, you know, seek some help along the way, but...
I, I think that's a great idea and it allows me to go home tonight.
Well, that's, that's procedure. I mean, I'm forgetting who has to do it. But we are to notify our representatives, in this case, quoting Mike, of the consequences of the election in town meeting and step back on our behalf of what we've done, that we did, that was attached from this one.
So I would, if we all agree, we propose that we move to authorize the chair. Thank you. To sign and transmit correspondence to Representatives Cory Atkins and Senator Mike Barrett, seeking to petition the Massachusetts General Court as approved by Town 2018 Town Meeting, allowing 17-year-olds to vote in town elections and in town meetings. Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. And we now will move to the annual town meeting follow-up with Carmen, the town moderator, to sort of fill in what information she's gleaned from the town meeting and suggestions and what all.
Good evening. Carmen Reese, Town Moderator, 52 Devon Street. We did do, so we went four nights instead of three despite our best efforts. In retrospect, I'm not sure there's anything we could have done about that. I think that we, we had a few innovations this year. We had closed captioning. We did an exit survey and we had around 80 responses to it, which is pretty good. We asked folks if they appreciated the, we asked a number of questions and one of the things we asked is whether folks had appreciated the closed captioning. And it appears that it was really very popular, although in general, people wish the screens had been a little higher and we can certainly see what we can, what we can do about that. And as an aside, the stenographer who did the closed, who's amazing, just amazing, who did the closed captioning for us, said that she's done this for many, many town meetings. First, she complimented us on the quality of our discourse and then she mentioned that this was the first town meeting in which she had considered charging by the word rather than the name.
Are we verbose?
Well, perhaps. It was perhaps.
Very active.
And I, I think that we were successful in solving some of the issues that we had last year in terms of visibility of screens and being able to tell who was speaking from the floor. People seem generally pleased with check-in and so forth. I think we didn't do as well as we might have in publicizing the fact that we had, the year before last, we had the, the local Wi-Fi login information. There's no password, but we had the login information up on the screen. So we promoted it a lot more than we did this year. And in fact, we had Wi-Fi and we had all of the town meeting materials available online. And one of the comments that we got on the questionnaires was, why is there all this paper? Why don't you put this stuff online? So clearly, we did not do a great job making folks understand that that was there and it remains a goal to try and reduce the amount of paper we produce and encourage people to bring their tablet or what have you to town meeting so that they can look at materials electronically rather than picking up a piece of paper.
And do we think that the Wi-Fi is, there's enough bandwidth so that everybody there did I...
So, let's see what people, that was a question. For those people who used it, we asked how they felt about the general speed of the Wi-Fi. Let me just see if I can figure out what that answer was. So it was a four out of five. So people in general felt that they got what they needed out of the Wi-Fi access. I don't know if that reflects reduced use or adequate speed, but, but that's, that's good as a, as a response. In general, folks were, did access town meeting information on the website. They found that it was well organized and complete. And that's incidentally consistent with one of the recommendations that was made by the Town Governance Study Committee back in 2014, that we try and get all the motions and the materials for town meeting on the website ahead of town meeting as far in advance as we could so that it was there for folks. And people do seem to be taking advantage of that. People continue to feel that hearings are important and we had lots of comments that they, they'd like even more in-depth conversation at hearings than what we currently have, which was incidentally another recommendation of the Town Governance Study Committee. We are continuing our active exploration of electronic voting mechanisms. I actually thought we did pretty well this year in the speed and efficiency of our counted votes. We reconfigured the chairs a little bit and tried to set ourselves up a little better for counts when we had to do them. But it would be even faster if we were doing those counts electronically. And we are going to have a demonstration with a small group of a new technology. We're hoping, Carrie's working with me to set that up, hoping sometime in June. And we'll be inviting a couple of you folks, not enough for a forum, but a couple of you to come as well as, as many other folks around town boards and committees, former moderators and so on, to see. The League of Women Voters will ask a couple of folks from that organization to come to test it out, see how it works, get a demonstration and find out what they're, what they're offering. And there are some folks out there that are using this particular technology, which is a little different from the ones that have been used in towns like Wayland and so forth. And one of the problems with it is it's, it's not, most of the systems that are out there are not inexpensive. The inexpensive one that we were really hoping would be promising for us, that we saw deployed in Acton, we saw its limits firsthand in, in terms of what happens when you get too many people at town meeting. And I think we're generally better populated at town meeting than Acton is, so that would be a real problem for us. So that's not a viable technology for us, even though it was less expensive. But we're continuing that search to see if we can find something that we could test out at town meeting and have people experience it and see what they think about it. One thing I want to ask you folks about is, one of the recommendations from the Town Governance Study Committee was that the Select Board explore the possibility of creating some kind of a mechanism in which perhaps by designation or vote of the Select Board that particular very high-impact, high-interest articles at town meeting could be followed by a vote at the polls. We do that now for Proposition 2 and 1/2 overrides, we're doing it for marijuana, we did it for the senior means tested property tax exclusion. And I think that the Town Governance Study Committee, one of the reasons that they thought this was a thing worth, they wouldn't want, they did not recommend going to the Australian ballot system in which everything on the warrant goes to the polls. They do that in New Hampshire. I don't know how, but does not, is not really workable for us and it would fundamentally change the nature of town meeting as a legislative body. But it wasn't long after the water bottle, town meeting articles had come, and you know, the water bottles were before us five times at, at town meeting. And clearly, it was an issue, a major import that people felt strongly about, and it kept coming back because people didn't believe, they didn't trust that the will of the town had really been spoken through the number of people that came to town meeting. And if that had been arguably a vote that the first time it was passed, it went to a vote at the polls afterwards and the vote at the polls also supported it, we wouldn't have heard from, you know, that would not have come back to town meeting again. Everyone would have said, okay, I guess that's the will of the town.
So is it the thought that a vote at the polls then solidifies something in a way that wouldn't allow it to come back to town meeting or just that it would discourage it?
Oh, no, it could still come back. But I think the issue is that we have 12,000 or so registered voters. On a really robust night at town meeting, we might get 1,000 voters. And so that's a pretty small percentage of our overall number of voters. And on an issue that's of really extraordinary impact to people, like the water bottle ban or the senior means tested property tax exemption, which is a cost shifting, it's a, it's a, it's a burden shifting mechanism that will affect everyone in town. So, and Proposition 2 and 1/2 override is the same, is the same.
A lot do vote ballots.
Say it again.
Those do vote ballots.
Yes, that's what I mean.
But required by law to do so.
Yes, that's right. Well, no, because the senior means tested property tax was not required by law. That was built into that process by the proponents of that article.
Required. It's required.
You think that was required? Okay. All right, because that was home rule legislation.
Two, two votes at town meeting, nine vote, turn the vote.
Okay.
If the vote went against what town meeting voted, would that nullify this town meeting?
Yes. I mean, just as the same as it would with a Proposition 2 and 1/2 vote, you have to have both those votes and if you don't get the second one, it's nullified. Yes.
So there's a concern that I, that jumps to my mind, that this is a way of... Right, so there's a concern that I, that jumps to my mind, that this is a way of immediately, instead of waiting the year for the following town meeting and revisiting the issue, if the vote didn't go the way you wanted it to, it's a second bite at the apple without any time elapsing to determine whether or not there was a safe reaction.
Yeah, I see that. You can see it as basically a motion for reconsideration, which otherwise might not have been allowed at town.
Who would decide? Who would decide what warrant question was so important that we needed to go there?
So that's one of the things that the study committee said would be worth thinking through, you know? If you were going to have a mechanism like this, what would it look like? Who would decide? What would be the criteria for deciding which articles, you know, I think the expectation was by the study committee that there wouldn't be a whole lot of them. But there might be some specific criteria that you could set to allow you to do it, and perhaps it would be within the discretion of the Select Board to require it when the warrant is open, that you might, because obviously you'd need notice of that. I think you'd have to have notice in the warrant when it went out to people. So it's not an uncomplicated issue, clearly, but it was, it was in there as one of the recommendations of the study committee in 2014.
Are there towns that do it, Karen?
Say what?
I didn't hear you. If you said, "Are there towns that in fact do do it?" I mean, I might be able to say it for a representative town government, you know, or the town would want to be the final say.
So I think the answer to that is no. I think it's either/or, that there are towns that do Australian, I think there are, we may actually have some towns on the Cape that do Australian ballot, which is puzzling because I didn't actually, that must be a home rule legislation issue. But, you know, I've seen discussion of that, but it's not, generally speaking, permitted under state law in Massachusetts. You'd have to do it through home rule legislation. They do it in New Hampshire. But it's all or nothing. It's everything, so it isn't selecting a few things. So there are these statutory things like Proposition Two and a Half, certain taxes that we might adopt that have to go to the polls afterwards, things that make big enough impact on the community that there is a judgment that you should have broader participation weighing in than what you typically get as a percentage of voter participation at town meeting.
Doesn't that, doesn't that discount the importance of town meeting as a, I mean...
It's certainly...
Yeah.
I believe even true people come to the town meeting. Who cares, you know, what the vote's going to be on October 20th?
How is it that it's a ballot?
I can go for it at the ballot later. Yeah.
You also are going to obviously have a cost. I assume that the cost would be borne by the town rather than the person who is seeking to have the vote, townwide vote.
The town definitely, the town definitely does pay for elections, and you would probably be having the same discussion you did tonight about, "When do we do it? Do we put it all by itself somewhere where it costs us X, or do we add it to a vote we're already going to have?" Because you're having an election pretty much every year anyway, so.
So Karen, in looking at the different ways electronic voting can occur, have you found the right tools or any tools that would allow people to participate at town meeting remotely?
No, it's not allowed under state law currently, and there's no cost-effective technology that I'm aware of that would allow, that has the security you would need to be sure that people who are logging in to vote are, A, registered voters, B, not voting multiple times, and C, actually watching the proceedings on TV before they vote. And I realize that's very different from what we were just talking about in terms of, you know, taking an isolated few things and saying, "Let's follow that by a vote at the polls."
Well, as we continue to sort of walk down the path of some kind of electronic voting, I wonder if this is a, with respect to the cost and machinery, whether this is something we could talk to some of our sister communities about, in the sense of, you know, hardly anybody has a town meeting on the same day. So I wonder, we rent this stuff, is the way it happens right now. I wonder if cost-effective, you think of three towns behind that, and then you're moving around.
So, you know, that is a thing that we have thought about and something that we've involved the town staff, who are pretty, you know, the burden would fall on them to maintain stuff. You know, one of the issues with electronic voting units is you've got to make sure the batteries are working in every single one, you've got to test them all, you have to set up your whole system, you have to troubleshoot it when it goes down, you have to, you know, there's a lot. And one of the problems for technical people who are doing this one day a year is staying on top of how it, how it works, as opposed to someone whose business it is to bring this thing around to different places and they know what they're doing.
It might be even economical to think about shared staff that just did this.
Right.
I don't think it's economical.
Yeah, you know, I think you could see it as a magic contract or something that, you know, various towns could participate in. You know, that might be coming at some point, and...
Well, the cost of it is probably going to continue to come down too, as you get scale.
Probably, and the technology is changing rapidly, and it may be that remote technology is not as far away as we think it is. It's not there now.
I also wonder, though, if we had them, I mean, the way I think we contemplated is, "Well, here's going to be a really close vote, so we can, or we have to, you can't tell when people reserve ballots and go." I bet we wind up doing electronic voting on every article rather than just those if the moderator can visually.
Why don't we count them all?
Well, my suspicion is that we've got these devices, all articles would be voted electronically.
I don't think so. You know...
Why wouldn't you? You've got these put in.
So my reservation about counting every vote electronically is every vote becomes a secret ballot. And I think there is a strong feeling in Concord against secret ballots, generally speaking. We don't ask for them often, and usually when they get asked for, it gets voted down. So people have a general preference for standing up and owning your point of view with your neighbors, it's part of being a community. And if every vote were a secret ballot, it wouldn't feel quite the same. And if you're only counting two-thirds votes, which are always, you know, not always, but frequently harder to count, and if you're only counting votes that the moderator can't call, then you don't really have that issue because, you know, we, you know, it's fewer votes, and especially where you have to count one. We already know it's close because everybody already stood up.
Because my biggest concern is sort of the, who decides what issues get voted on? If it's going to be kind of the Select Board, then that puts kind of an extra burden on the board to decide...
Are you going back to the question of whether we would have a vote at the polls?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So I have the recommendation of the committee here. Two specific options were floated that might allow occasional issues to be taken to a ballot vote. The first would be a superpetition article process that's completely separate from town meeting, and the idea behind this would be to seek special legislation to allow a citizen petition requiring a high number of signatures to place an item directly on a ballot without going to town meeting. It's one possibility.
So bypass.
Hmm?
Complete bypass.
Right. The second would be to allow for a waiting period after town meeting. This answers the issue that Jane raised, during which at time, a citizen petition, also requiring a high number of signatures, could be filed requesting that a single warrant item be voted again, up or down, at polls after town meeting. Under this scenario, the ballot vote outcome would prevail. Both of these would require a lot more research, policy development, public discussion, deliberation. Specifics of a proposal would have to be laid out for voters' careful consideration. So I guess what I would just ask is that you dust off the committee's report and have a look at this particular suggestion as well as others that may be in there that we haven't as a town acted on yet.
Well, you had a third. I mean, you saw the two that from the committee were, you know, a superpetition kind of thing, and the second one was a petition again. But you had also talked about earlier that there would be some process that before the fact, certain articles...
That would be another way to do it.
And the Select Board and/or the moderator might have rules like you currently do. You could designate an article, a high-interest article, and assign it to a particular time and date at town meeting, sort of for the same purpose, that is to alert people that Tuesday at 7:00 we're going to do this. So that's another forward...
Exactly. Another way to do it. So the committee felt they were absolutely not in favor of a subsequent ballot vote on all town meeting votes.
Yeah. Australia.
Right. And they, and there were many members of the committee that thought it would irrevocably change town meeting. But they were definitely open to pursuing some options that might allow the occasional issue, the occasional compelling issue, to go to a ballot vote. And, you know, as I say, I think we do it occasionally on a small number of things, largely by state dictate. So we know how that works. Works okay. And then the big question would be, "What's the mechanism? When do you put it in place? What's your selection criteria for it?"
Could you see any of the items of the warrant articles from this year's town meeting that you would think would benefit from having a full town vote?
The ban of gas leaf blowers.
That never even came.
No, that's right. It didn't. And that illustrates, that illustrates one of the problems, right? If you said that we were going to have a vote on that and then it doesn't get moved at town meeting, you know, what is that? What is that? You'd have to have some provision for that situation. But had that been moved and passed at town meeting, it would have been the water bottle. We would have built, we would have seen that another four times. And it was going to have broad impact across town, and it was going to have some fierce proponents, some fierce opponents, and it was going to have a significant impact on the way people do things.
Well, if we, if we had adopted the second recommendation of the study committee, which is understood, was after town meeting, after 30 days, whatever it is, a petition by some number of towns folk.
Right.
The dog thing would have come back.
Yes.
Definitely come back as a town vote.
Yeah. Yes.
But that, again, was only, I mean, it would have been the town vote with no impact because it's only a sense of the community. It had no authority to enforce the regulation.
So that, that's true, and you could, you could wonder whether it's worth spending money on that, but if you had, say, 200 citizens who said they wanted to do that, that's how many can make you have a special town meeting if they want one on a...
But you might, in priori, again, as I say, the only things that are possible here are when action is required as opposed to the urge to suggest it. I mean, so you could set...
You could certainly do that.
Limited.
Limited times.
Right. You could, you could disqualify advisory articles.
I think we've got some dusting to do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have a discussion, Karen?
Yeah.
I have a question, Karen, for you. This was, this was the second year of using the gymnasium.
It was.
And, I mean, the last year, or a year ago when we did it, was an experiment.
Yes.
And I guess this year was sort of a follow-up experiment.
Yes.
What is, what's your thinking? I thought, I thought it worked great.
So I, as I say, I think that we got some of the kinks out that we had in the first year. I think we can bring the cost down to do this in the gymnasium by making some infrastructure changes. Specifically, some very forward-thinking person in the old CCHS saved the projection screen that used to be in the auditorium, so we still have it, and it could be mounted in the gymnasium, which could mean that we don't have to rent the big screens that we're renting, and if they didn't have to be rear-projection because we had a projector mounted on the ceiling permanently, then we would have more seats because we lose a lot of seats from those rear-projection screens. We could also have the screen higher. So those are some things we can continue to do. We also, I felt like we really did a nice job this year coordinating with school staff. We had our pre-town meeting staff meeting at the high school, which made it so much easier for the school people to come and meet with us. And the new superintendent, Laurie Hunter, was very attentive to town meeting issues and very, very supportive of...
I think she came to at least two, if not all four, of the nights, and I think that I've never seen that happen before, and I certainly appreciate it.
So I, I was very gratified by the support and cooperation that we had from the schools and the collaborative way that school and town staff were able to work together. So that was just great. We still had people in our comments saying, "I don't understand why we paid however many million dollars for this high school and we can't sit in the comfortable seats in the auditorium. I don't get it." And, you know, we can't fit everybody in there.
It's...
A handful.
A handful. I did get some personal calls on less the seats, but more the fact that, and not as a request to go back to the auditorium because the pitch was too dramatic there, but that the loss of the sightline to the boards and committees, you know, in fact, I think there was a suggestion made to me that we asked the theater department to build us a set, but, you know, a, some kind of platform to be used at...
To elevate the...
To elevate, you know, sort of a stage for the, other than the town, other than the town moderator.
Yeah, we certainly could do that. We certainly could do that, and you guys would just have to try not to fall off the edge or push your tapers or chairs off. But we could do that, and I, and in fact, we have some of those types of pieces of equipment in the building that can be deployed for that purpose. So we could do that. You know, we've, we didn't have as many, I don't think we had any comments this year. In the first year, a lot of people missed seeing speakers on the screen, but of course, you were nev, you had never been seeing speakers in your own room on the screen. You had only been seeing speakers from a different room, and since we're all in the same room, no one was on the screen. But I think that...
Almost cafeteria people.
I think that we, moving all of the microphones to the front of the room was helpful in terms of people understanding, and then being very regular in where we were going with the, with calling on people to speak, so that people had a pretty good idea of where the voices were coming from and who was speaking. But I, I think that more comments in, in favor of the gymnasium than against it, and fewer complaints about the comfort of the chairs. Most of the complaints come from people who get there late and sit in the bleachers. And that's kind of a...
Any comments about, you didn't use the pro-con likes?
No, actually, not a single comment about that.
Positive. I heard some favorable comments of not doing that. It allowed people to just express their opinion and, you know, one way or another, and that they didn't feel like they were committing to a particular position always.
You know, it's an interesting thing, because the pro-con microphones always create a little bit of confusion where you get someone who's standing at the wrong microphone for what their position actually is. The place there are, of a... The place there are of a benefit is if you want to create balance in the opportunity for people for and against an article to have an opportunity to speak.
That didn't seem to be a problem.
Didn't seem to be a problem this year. Sometimes you do. I think if you have a bottle ban, for example, you might really need pro and con microphones so that you are giving equal time to people for or against the issue. But we didn't really have an issue. We had some issues that might have been like that, but in fact, there was pretty balanced comment on them that distributed itself. It actually helped, I think, to have six or seven microphones.
Especially a handicap microphone.
Was that the first year we had the festival microphone?
Second year. And this year, I noticed that people, people used it who weren't necessarily in a wheelchair, but just didn't have it in them to stand up in line at the microphone and preferred to sit in a chair, and that worked just fine.
Any comments about parking and access to the?
No.
I must say, I think the police deserve credit. I'm amazed how quickly people were able to exit the high school area. I thought that would be a big bottleneck, but it seemed to work out pretty well.
I would say that the chief criticism of town meeting was that the moderator was not draconian enough on the observation of time limits.
Note to self.
Note to self, exactly, yes. So the most common comment was that people needed to get whacked when they were into the numbers, and they needed to just stop.
I'll keep that in mind for the select board.
Yeah, okay. So fair warning, everybody. I've been chided, and I will be responding next year. So any comments from your folks, from you folks on town meeting before I let you get back to what you need to do?
I thought it went very smoothly. I thought it was an improvement in the last year, as you sort of said, and now it's kind of a test year. But I thought this, if you didn't know, we've been doing it in that room over for two years. I suspect you would have thought we-
Yeah. I can tell you, the fire chief said that this was the best town meeting ever in terms of movement of people and organization.
First town meeting, chief.
As chief, yes. But that's true. But he's been there at a lot of town meetings, so, but he was very pleased with how the physical layout worked.
I think with the number of sort of controversial issues, it went extremely well, and I had no problems that we had a fourth night because I think that there were a lot of issues that people wanted to make the points of view know. So I think it went extremely well.
What was the highest turnout night, the first?
Carrie, I think it was the second.
I think it was the second. What kind of numbers are they in, 300, 400, 800?
500.
500.
That was the big turnout.
Was our biggest turnout. Yeah. And, you know, I think there was some frustration by people who turned out thinking that a particular article would come up on a particular night, and then we just moved so much slower than we thought. And that's town meeting.
Democracy, right. Takes a while.
It's a little messy. And I guess one other criticism that, there were several comments about, is why are we spending all this time on tributes? Can't we just get to the articles on the warrant? So here, a question for you. How would you feel about starting at 6:45?
Does that make a big difference?
Fifteen minutes.
That would have shifted us from going to four p.m.
Do that on tribute night.
I think you're going to have to do it every night if it's going to do that.
Yeah, I don't think it can do different times.
We ran into a problem with was that no new business after 10 o'clock.
Yep.
And that was the only one, and I think that was, the communication didn't sort of work perfectly. But I think that you got to have kind of a standard.
We could tighten tribute up somewhat, I think, if that was adversely impacting the same people.
Still have a really fine tribute if it's a little shorter. Less is more.
I agree.
Think about the 6:45. I'd be interested to know what you thought. You know, fifteen minutes over three nights is 45 minutes, and you can do a bunch of articles in 45 minutes.
Could I just ask about the second week of April? We had been doing the fourth week of April for many years.
Yes.
Did anybody have any, is that our new?
Other than the potential for snow.
So I think on that, you know, the glitch that we had was the consent calendar getting put in the finance committee report before we had our motion review meeting with town council, just because that's how the timing had worked, and then there were so many changes to the motion language as the result of that meeting that it was unusable as printed in the FinCom report. So feel like that not to happen again, but I think that's just a scheduling of that meeting, so it's not a reason not to have a town meeting early. How was it for town staff in terms of getting ready earlier?
I think my understanding was it went pretty well. It didn't, you know, shorten up things, but that was okay.
I think it was actually really helpful in terms of coordinating with the schools because it can be really hard to be following April vacation and they aren't around in that week when last-minute things are coming up and last-minute issues for them on their motions and so forth are being dealt with if school is not in session and everyone's on vacation. So that, I think it really does work better for them to do it before the vacation.
Passover and Easter both be late April next year, April 19, 20, something like that, so we could again go about the same time that we did this year.
That would be fun from my perspective. We'll just hold that town council meeting earlier.
I think it's an honest maybe on all of our boards and committees to push our processes through.
Yeah, the other people I think it's hard on is the planning department and the planning board because they have an awful lot of work to do to get ready for town meeting, and it's very detailed. So I'd be interested to know how it felt for them, having a week less to be ready. Are they still here?
Planning board, not planning department.
Oh, yeah.
You really have to consult Marcia.
Yeah.
Your staff.
Thank you so much. Item number 10 is the CCTV discussion. Chris and Jane have been kind of heading up that area, so I'll let you all carry the ball.
I don't know if we want to have Kate, Assistant Town-
I was going to say, Kate's been in-
See her over there. Andrew was blocking her.
In where we've gotten.
A lot of the heavy lifting.
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect.
So I guess what I'll share, you know, my thoughts following town meeting. We have had some conversations, and you have, and with your packet tonight, the proposed priority goals submitted by the CCTV board for the coming year, and it's based on a document that Kate prepared, so it reflects, you know, what we thought were the goals, and those are shown there. There's some question marks I see in terms of, there's some things that are undecided, but it's improvement in communication, I guess, really. There hasn't been a lot of regular communication going on, and I had been communicating, but so this is an effort, clearly an effort to try to improve that, which I think is good. I'm leaning towards extending the contract from the time that expires on September 30th by nine months to have it expire, extend it to June 30th, and see how things progress with this list of goals, assuming the board agrees with, generally with the goals. And that we do, you know, sort of public evaluation, now that you have the PEG Advisory Committee, we want to staff that up fully so they're working, they can help us evaluate progress.
I see Colin in the audience.
So I think there's some tools in place to help us assess publicly progress that's being made toward these goals. I would be pleased if these things were accomplished in the next 12 months, so that, I guess that's-
And the nine-month extension is because of the coordination of the town-
To align with the town's fiscal year, just that, I think, for ease of our operation. I don't think we've heard any pushback from them on that, so that would be my suggestion, is that we start immediately implementing the goals and evaluating their success and increasing communication. Kate, did you?
Yeah. No, I just, I think that it's going to be important, and I know that the CCTV board has committed to posting these goals and objectives and then their periodic progress reports on their website, and I think we should do the same. Because I think that the citizens didn't understand necessarily where this was coming from, and so that's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're showing the progress for anything else that we're talking about. So that's helpful. I think we had a good meeting with Neville and Sid Levin, who is the vice president of CCTV and of Carlisle resident, and I felt like we left that room generally on the same page, and then this is the document that came out of that, which pretty much speaks to what we spoke about that morning.
Well, I want to give both Chris and you, Kate, enormous kudos for the amount of time and patience you've offered this process. I think we heard concern at town meeting in the way our article went forward, concern echoed that somehow freedom of access to, or freedom of speech was going to be impacted in our contract discussions with CCTV. And I think that part of the openness of the communication between us and CCTV going forward should also dispel the confusion over the role of PEG access and government-controlled media. I think they're very, very different. And, you know, in fact, I know that both board members agreed with that very, that this is a very different situation. And I think the more we do, perhaps maybe a regular update in the town manager's update or, you know, as the liaison of the PEG access, but I don't know that PEG access is exactly on, in line with the reporting on this. But I think if we are able to report regularly on the progress, that's another check and balance.
I think Kate was going to have the Public Information Officer, Erin Stevens, be more involved in interacting.
And that would be great, but have somebody hold the responsibility for that regular report, the select board.
And just, we have a commitment that every other week that I'm going to meet with the executive director of CCTV and then on the off weeks, so every other week from there, that I will meet with members of the CCTV board, either with, you know, hopefully with our liaison, Jane. But so I think, at least for the short term, we have, we'll have a meeting once a week with some form of CCTV to make sure that we're all sort of marching to the-
Will their board meetings be subject to open meetings? Will they have?
As a private nonprofit, they have to have one annual meeting a year, which they do, and announce their agenda and vote on their budget, but-
But any contract extension, I think, should encourage more transparency in how the public funds are used and how their decisions are made. Like the Concord Housing Development Corporation's private nonprofit, but they post their meetings and record their meetings with minutes, and it's more transparent. We should, no, after, right after.
And then, but that was also reflecting the will of town meeting, that that, the CFGC become more transparent, and I think that however this was discussed at town meeting, I think transparency was an underlying interest, and I think that that could only make it better.
So can I just ask, what is the process for, I understand that now there's greater communication, weekly meetings. What is the process for evaluation of performance? I mean, these are pretty, this is like a really good progressive, let's have priorities that pass into each. What, how do you evaluate performance in this? Is there a mechanism that's set up? Is there?
For me, I suppose it would be an ongoing conversation with the town manager about how much, because usually you would give your goals and objectives to your contractor, and then you would know that they're being completed on time and hopefully under budget. And when they're not, usually that's an open communication between the vendor and the customer. This is a bit of a different animal, and so I think that we have to look at how much time we're spending as Concord employees to ensure the goals and objectives are met. And it's not, it's not unreasonable that we would be putting in some time, but I think that we just need to know that it's not all resting just on CCTV and/or just on the town of Concord, but, and I think we don't really have an idea of what that's going to be yet. I mean, if you go through the pages, I don't think anybody that, you know, certainly I'm not, and I know the Public Information Officer isn't, and I gathered from our meeting with the board, that nobody thinks that any of these goals are insurmountable, but I'm not sure if they're all going to be done to the level that we're all satisfied with, not just us, but that CCTV is going to be satisfied with that as well. So I think it really is sort of a, you know, we'll try to tick them off once, one at a time, and if things don't work out or they don't seem to be worth the effort, then we just, we'll have to come to a mutual agreement that we're not going to do it again.
So I guess my part of that question is about, so if this was granting a nine-month extension to the contract to end next June, right?
Currently, it ends September 30th, so it would end next June 30th.
Yeah, it would end June 30th. It would be incumbent upon us to know if the performance is good or exceeding expectations because if you need to get to June 30th, find that performance didn't meet our objectives or joint objectives, and then not have a contract in place for doing CCTV. So I guess my question is, you know, we need to be able to plan for what if it fails? Now, we're hoping it doesn't, but you don't want to be, come to the end of June 30th and have no option going forward.
We won't let that happen.
So perhaps we should have a monthly review. I would enlist the assistance of the PEG Advisory Committee, which is an independent group that reports to you. I think they could help us with that because it is somewhat subjective whether they've achieved this particular goal or not. But, so I think we should, we should do a public and clear, written, whatever evaluation. I don't know whether it should be quarterly or monthly. But I think that we also would be, should be considering a request for proposals process, an RRP process. I think the expectation was after the first tenure agreement, which ran, I think, from 2004 to 2014, when that expired, I think they expected it would roll over without a process, but even for folks like the Emerson umbrella, they have to respond to an RRP process. So I think we need to think about that, and that maybe before we go beyond June 30th of 2019, we go through an RRP process, because even when there's limited parties likely to respond, we still go through the effort and set goals and expectations.
So I thought the document was quite nice and very helpful. A couple of comments on it, though, there were some process-oriented goals, which I get, communication and that kind of stuff. Then there were also two goals that had to do with expansion. One had to do with central expanding programming. I saw Mill mention YouTube in there, it looks like, it just seems lit, unless I missed it. I didn't see that in there, and that seems odd to me. And with the other expansion goal, three, I think it is, which is sort of the expansion of techno, I think a five-year capital budget should be developed, rather than just have a goal about expand, nothing wrong with it, but I think we had a convergence, both expansions should be converted into specific goals, expansion. We should have three more standing committees that are covered by, I don't know what they should be, but, and one additional room brought online, or two additional rooms brought online. Very explicit goals for what the technology expansion is going to be, what the program expansion is going to be. So I think associated with this, we could work to develop some goals, which I think would also therefore be helpful in evaluation. You know, are we better, are we communicating better, you know? Okay, but that's kind of sometimes your opinion versus my opinion. But did we bring a room online? Are we covering two more committees? Do we have new microphones? I don't know what this is.
So for the capital items, my understanding is that for years and years, we just gave the- the general lump sum of the money that Comcast gave us over, and so.
I don't think that's working.
But that's not what we're doing anymore. We're keeping the capital in-house.
Well, we keep the money here, and then we disperse it, but what I'm interested in is not the financial disbursement cost, but what are the capital projects?
Right.
That we expect to get down over the course of the next three years.
Right, and so that's what I was getting at, is since we're keeping the capital in-house and not allocating that in the budget, the capital expenses are being driven by my office and facilities.
Okay.
At least for the town's envelope.
Okay.
I think Carlyle is separate, and they have their capital money, and they deal with it, but this will be the first time that we've done that. So we worked with the CCTV Executive Director and a member of the staff to sort of spec out the hearing room and a couple of other assisted listening devices, but that's in conjunction with, like I said, my office and our facilities director, so.
But they would need to implement, I mean, you might hold the capital, but if we say, you know, something is going to happen, will CCTV be the folks that actually do it, or will the town do it?
No, the town would do it, and the idea is that we issue, well, hopefully we could buy off the bid list, but if we don't, we're issuing our own RFP, but of course, we would work with them on the specs that they need for things that are going to be compatible with their equipment, but instead of just accepting the equipment that they say you need, I think it's been more of an interactive process, at least within the past several months, that, you know, the facilities director and I have spec out what's going to be in the hearing room, and we're able to talk to those vendors and say, look, this is, this is our end result, this is what we want.
So if a goal was to bring 141 Kaiser Road online, that's really an issue for you.
Well, in conjunction with them, but yes, it would be, it would be a project that's through the town, through our facility.
Well, I'd like to see that done on.
So we have a ten, we have a tenure that's going to be rolling out at the end of the summer, that will have in with our capital budget, that's just.
In the regular town.
In the regular capital budget, so you'll see it much like we do with Humgem, BD, and anything else, that you'll.
So it also, when we get into the fiscal year alignment, it should say much nicely on top of.
That was where the idea for the nine months year round, it was beginning to be a little tricky.
I think that will help overall, because then you'll have real specific targeted programs to work on.
Yeah, part of that is the replacement of computers and items and other things like that, that, you know, obviously we rely on CCTV's staff, or their subject matter expertise about that, but we want to make sure that that's represented in our budget.
The equipment housed over CCTV, all of that projection equipment and stuff.
Well, it has a depreciation value, so we'll, we'll do it like we do, I guess the best example of that is BD, much like any other enterprise fund, where you purchase something, it depreciates over, you know, 10 or 20 years, and so, right now, I'm just starting to build the table so that we can see what cameras, you know, may need to be replaced, and obviously if something breaks, it moves up, but at least we can get an idea, like the school buses.
That's good.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
An awful lot of work is gone into it, it hasn't always been easy work, so thank you.
Can I just, I shared with you earlier the Comcast payments that were made, and we are seeing signs that September was the $99,000 for the quarter, and then in December was down to 96, and then this quarter, as of March, the revenue was down to 91, I think it was, 91 and a half. So there's a trend that as Mark Howell's broadband customers increase in number, we may see revenue decrease from Comcast, so that will have an impact on how we conduct those operations.
Okay, item number 11 is the 2018 General Obligation Bond Issue Vote. Please read all of the memo dated May 1 from Carrie Lurk, spouts the.
Life expectancy of some of this capital equipment, so the bond council is asking that the elected officials certify that the fire engines, ambulance, and radio equipment that will be borrowing and issuing notes of tenure duration, that they will have a life expectancy of at least that in operation, and the board did this a year ago, I think was the first time they did it, so this is a follow-up.
Fire pumper truck with 20 years.
Typically 20.
Ambulance, 10 years, and public safety communication equipment, 10 years, very borrowing amounts.
And so this leads up to the spring issuance of all the bond, I'm questioning, you'll be seeing Kerry Luter maybe in a month or so, and this will help her put the package together for the permanent issuance of that.
We're basically authorizing the clerk to sign the, have a vote and have the clerk sign it. Can we necessarily read the entire section, or can we just vote on what is in our packet on page three? It's simplified.
What Kerry, this needs to be read.
Doesn't need to.
Okay.
So clerk.
Clerk may read. Nothing clerk.
Hi. The clerk, select board of Town of Concord, Massachusetts, certified that at a meeting of the board held on May 7, 2018, of which we, the meeting, all members of the board were duly notified, and at which quorum was present, the following vote is unanimously will be passed, all of which appears on the official record that was lodged in my custody. Voted that the maximum useful life of department equipment listed below to be financed, but proceeds borrowing authorized by votes of town passed on April 24, 2017, as served by a determined pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, to be as follows. Article 10, fire pumper truck borrowing amount $575,000 with a maximum useful life of 20 years. Article 11, ambulance borrowing amount $260,000 for a maximum life of 10 years. Article 9, public safety communication equipment borrowing amount $225,000, useful life of 10 years. I further certify that the votes were taken at the meeting, open meeting to the public, and no vote was taken by secret ballot. Under notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of these votes was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a man of conspicuous leave visible to the public at all hours in or on municipal building that the town, that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method for notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General of South Florida, and 940 CMR 29-03, paragraph 2, Part B, at least 70, 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so close to the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the subject matter of this vote were taken in consecutive sessions, all in accordance with general law, Chapters 30A, Sections 18 through 25, as amended, dated this date, May 7, 2018, and signed by the Department of Sports and the Department.
Wow.
Motion to.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We now moving on to review the Climate Action Advisory Board draft charge.
Will we do this?
Please.
So the, at the, what's with the Energy Futures Task Force, there are a number of recommendations that were made to the towns to consider, and one of them was what was being determined as a follow-on committee, once we had had a Sustainability Director brought on to our town. So we have a Sustainability Director, and this draft was put, Kate Henley. So we worked on a draft, this is definitely a draft, of what this advisory board would do, for Kate, the Select Board, and the Town Manager, in advising the town on projects or initiatives or inventions, innovations to meeting climate goals. And there are several goals that came out of the EFTF, and they're included in this charge, as those are the goals that they had previously set forth. But the charge here, because it was determined both, you know, in conversation with the original EFTF and in Kate's position, that sustainability is broader than just energy use. And so we looked at how, what would be useful for the town, this first Sustainability Director, to have in its advisory capacity, saying, here's what, you know, we ought to be doing in sustainability, here's the cutting-edge kind of things we ought to be thinking about, here's the latest technology that we should be considering for greenhouse gas emission reductions. And so it was with that in mind that this draft was put together, and we also realized that it's very easy for the Sustainability position to morph into many things, and you can't, you can't let it grow beyond the capacity of a very well-intentioned and hard-working individual. So this was meant to be a first draft of discussion, and I think you all saw an email that was sent from Frank Cummings, signed by a number of people, with some innocent suggestions, and I think they're worthy for us to discuss and figure out, you know, how to put these in. And I know there are people here who had opined at different meetings, and we probably should hear from them about what they feel is missing. I volunteered to read Charlie's email, and he's going to be here on his own to tell us what his thoughts were. So I think that probably the next step is to allow people to tell us what's missing or what we, what we didn't capture, and then I think our board should take into consideration the different thinking, and I would suggest that we, you know, come back to it, you know, have time to nubulate, we may want to do some editing, so my suggestion is that we don't vote tonight, but we hear that we know, that others who have a lot to say, and so.
That's really a good start.
Yes.
This is a start.
We get educated tonight.
Should we, how, you want to start on the left and move across? Anybody like to speak? Come forward, please, and.
Before we ask audience, I'd like to know if our Sustainability Director or sit-in Town Manager got stuff they want to tell us about, not, don't YouTube, but I don't mind.
The only thing I would add to Alice's introduction, which I think was, was really great content.
You jacked it up yourself.
Sorry, this is Kate Henley, Sustainability Director. I think in thinking about this charge and the reason that we have called it in the draft form, the Climate Action Advisory Board, and that the idea is that it's broader than just sustainability, and that the reason we're addressing sustainability, we have these greenhouse gas goals, is to mitigate our impact on climate change. And there's also another aspect of addressing climate change, which is addressing our resilience to the impacts that we will inevitably see because of climate change. So in making this broad, it, you know, addressed our climate goals and also left the door open for a lot of things that fall under sustainability and energy, and a lot of different topics that are all very much interrelated.
Mine isn't as interesting as that, because my role in looking at this was to make it easy for Kate to recognize where she is going to be able to go to her think tank, which is what I was thinking of, the members of this committee, where they can workshop and bounce things off one another. It's great if she wants to bounce things off me, but what I know about some of the things that Kate talks about, you could put on the head of her pin, so it's helpful for her to have people of like backgrounds to be able to do that. What I was wary about, which I expressed to Alice, is, you know, making sure that Kate knows that she has one boss, one person that she has to go to and say, look, I have all of these competing priorities, what's your priority? And generally, the way that we do that, even though, you know, she'll answer to me, is that I would go to the Town Manager and say, here are the priorities, you know, let's, let's see what we can do, and I think that that just makes it easier, and so Kate's worried about the mitigation on our effect to the planet, and I'm worried about mitigating the fact that we need to hire a new Sustainability Director, but she gets, you know, exasperated and says, I'm out. So that was sort of where most of these, these things came from, which is to make it broad enough that it's attractive for people to want to be part of it, but, you know, condensed enough so that it doesn't just say, and Kate, you have to do everything everybody says to you, you know, with, with no, you know, measurements whatsoever.
Kate, I know that you had considerable research in what other towns had done in the similar, you just want to talk a little bit about, you know, how you, what you learned from those other towns.
Yeah, so in thinking about this draft charge, I know that we've had the CSAT committee for a number of years, but I looked at other nearby towns and cities and what kinds of committees they have, and there's a pretty broad range. So you see that, you know, some towns, like Lexington, have, you know, green energy and net zero, very specific charges around specific sustainability topics, or just sustainable energy, or energy and sustainability, and then you see that some communities that I think may be a little further along in their sustainability journey, so to speak, like Cambridge, have these kind of climate action, or climate change action, or something to do with climate, and they seem to have kind of broadened the scope of their committee, and are addressing a lot of things that, that fall within that. But there definitely is a pretty broad range, I think, depending on kind of when the community set out to address these issues and what the specific interests were in town.
And there is some state funding potentially for some of these efforts?
Yeah, so as part of our participation in the Green Communities Program, there's ongoing funding available for looking at energy efficiency in our municipal buildings. We're applying for a grant through the state to address our climate resilience, and that's a new program, the MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. So those are the two that will be kind of official programs that will be part of, but there's, you know, always ongoing things that come and go through different state programs in particular.
Laura.
Laura Gilpizaras, 1376 Old Marlborough Road. I see that resilience is moving up in the world, and I'm very happy to see that, and I thank everyone who's expended so much effort thinking about these things and trying to put together a program. So mainly, I have questions at this point. What is, what is the function of this committee? Does it replace any existing committees, or is it an add to some of the committees we have ongoing at this point? And I'm, I'm interested in exploring the resilience issue a little bit further in this, but as far as the number of committees we'll end up with.
I'll answer that one, and you can help me out a little bit. This is not meant to replace any committee that we have, this was a firm recommendation from the Energy Futures Task Force that we have a follow-on committee to keep us all on track. So it doesn't replace anything, but there certainly would worry about overlap or interact, interaction between the different parts of committees, so we need to figure out how does, like, CSAT work with this committee. This, this committee is a think tank of the best and the brightest minds that can help direct strategic initiatives and strategic direction for the town to reach its long-term goals. Not to be, you know, the informators of these ideas, but to say, this is what we're seeing, it's happening all across, you know, New England, but we're missing it here, and here's an opportunity. So to help guide the thinking that we, you know, we all live in our boxes, this opens our box wide, we take in other thoughts and ideas, like, you know, maybe Kate and Kate, Kate too, work on it.
And so would I be correct in assuming that this is the kind of outcome of Article 23 at this year's town meeting? Oh, okay. So I'm, I was interested in Kate's statement that the MVP grant would fund building energy, and, oh, I'm sorry, did we misunderstand?
Green Communities Grant funds building energy initially.
Okay, and the MVP would fund?
It funds initially a workshop, a community building resilience workshop.
Okay.
It's a fuller engagement process, that at the end, you have a report that identifies the top hazards to which your community is most vulnerable to due to climate change.
Right.
And then after you're part of the program, you can apply for resilience action grants, so specific projects and actions that would start to address some of those vulnerabilities.
Uh-huh. So I guess my question is, I've, I've looked very closely at the MVP program and the requirements, and one of.
Can you ask everybody to speak up just a little bit?
Oh.
These microphones don't.
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
So one of the first steps in the MVP program is to set up the core team that you mentioned, and I've read through it, and there's no really guidelines, although it'd be interesting to see what other towns have done in terms of membership on that committee. But I would look at that almost as the resilience committee that was called for in Article 23, and from that perspective, wonder if there might be confusion. I have a number of people who've expressed interest in being on a resilience committee, and I'm, I'm trying to formulate in my mind where I would direct them, so if there's going to be a new advisory task force, it would be nice to have somebody with that kind of knowledge and input on that committee. At the same time, if there's going to be a core group, and it will include community members with some expertise in, in different areas, then I would want, you know, to recommend that others maybe seek. that others maybe seek.
I think we're getting a little bit ahead.
Okay.
Of where we are discussing a charge for a potential, a new committee. It's a draft charge.
Okay.
And with the, with the vulnerability grant, if we get that, there is a prescribed process, and it may be from that that we develop the committee or the actual, I don't know what it comes out of that.
Well, the core committee that we have, that we've outlined for the grant process is myself and Kate, our facilities director, the director of the light plant, hopefully whomever the new assistant director of the light plant may be. And then the energy manager and energy coordinator, Janice Eddy and Pamela Katie. And so we've taken to meeting at least once a month, and we, we did the Green Communities Grant together for the first time this year, and the MVP Grant, which is due this Friday, and Kate is spearheading that, but we've done that together too. So that's the team that we're working with right now. And KLA, who is our consultant for our greenhouse gas baseline, they're also an MVP-certified vendor. And so they'll be guiding us through the process. And from there, you know, they'll be able to, after we have the plan in place, tell us where, like, what Kate said, we're most vulnerable. And from there, we'll bring that back to the think tank and kind of go from there. But we're, we're not, we're not there yet.
Okay.
Could I just ask a question? If it might be possible to expand the core team, to include someone with knowledge of nature-based solutions, since the resilience, the MVP grant is focused on nature-based solutions and it's-
So we're talking about this committee.
Okay. Well, it's just that-
I know the original, but I think that that will be considered for sure, and I think we should include it, was if we get the MVP grant, there's a whole lot of stuff that will be worked on.
Right.
And I understand the want, your interest in having someone with a background in the biosystems that could help add our, I think, that the reporting force to have.
Right. The, the reason I'm asking is that based on the committee charge that you've outlined here, the committee would be responsible for resilience. If the MVP grant developed into, okay, so-
It's not doing resilience planning. It's really like, what is it? It may have been a sounding board that says, you know, "The MVP grant is great, but there's a central grant that you might be able to..." So it's a forward thinking approach to what we haven't considered yet. So it's not, it, that's my thought.
Okay. I had another question in there, but it, it slipped.
We need to kind of move along.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay.
And there are others of it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Pardon to the energy, this is Climate Energy, Climate Action Advisory Board.
Charlie Parker, 105 Chestnut Street. I've, I've been involved with, with CSAC for quite a few years and with the EFTF throughout its entire cycle. And we've been meeting since the EFTF put its report together, a group of us, and some of you have been involved in that. And, you know, I think, you know, an underlying current across, you know, all of the-
Charlie. Right, right there.
The microphones don't amplify, so they- You know, an underlying, underlying discussion or set of issues throughout the process has been, to what extent do we, you know, getting back to the sustainability point, to what extent do we have a broad mandate and a broad approach, you know, including a lot of sustainability principles that, you know, and sustainability activities that can, you know, from time to time, be less definable? Or to what extent do we, do we work on a more highly-focused approach that addresses the, the major thrust of the Greenhouse Gas Solutions Act, GHSA, from the Commonwealth? To the extent that we stay focused on energy and on greenhouse gas, we may stand a better chance of getting something done than if we go broad. And I think that, you know, what I picked up on in looking through the duties were some items that, that I thought, you know, could, could potentially broaden the, you know, the mandate in a way that makes it difficult, perhaps, to achieve the, the overall objectives that were outlined by the EFTF, namely, the, the 25% reduction by 2020, the 80% reduction by 2050, and so forth. So when you get into climate resilience and hazard mitigation tools and strategies, you're talking about dealing with the effects of, of greenhouse gas rather than the cause of our, of our climate issues. So do we want to deal with the causes, or do we want to deal with the outcomes? And can we deal with both through the same committee and through the same process? I, I would maintain that, that the skills and competencies, knowledge and so forth, and activities that are involved in, in the, in the resilience and hazard mitigation side of the equation are significantly different than the ones that are involved in the, in the greenhouse gas and energy management side of the equation. You know, if you could do both, you could do both through one committee, well, that would be good. But I think my take on it is that, that the practicality of that is what really ought to be discussed. And the need for us to make sure that we really do get something done, rather than simply, you know, talk about this a lot. I, I think that, just in closing, I think the, the way the, the EFTF framed the, the goals and the way town committee framed the goals, I thought it was all very well-done and very well-contained and very specific to, to these numeric goals, along with methodology to measure, and a, a committee that would advise to that effect. How do you measure climate resilience? Probably can, but it's, it's a different ball of wax, and all of a sudden, you're into a bunch of activities that, that, you know, don't necessarily relate. And you might, in fact, end up doubling the workload. If you're to do both effectively, you're doubling the workload of, of the town staff who are assigned to, to, to support this committee. The other quick one is water and wastewater management. I would caution somewhat on that. I think that Public Works, the, the Public Works Commission is really responsible for that. I think that, that that ought to be, have a caveat that it is more specific, going to be more specific to embedded energy, not things that people could get interested in like water conservation. We could conserve a lot of things, a lot better and conquered, but I don't think water conservation is the, is the topic necessarily for this, for this group, or water management in general.
Yes. Remember, the Sustainability Director has all of these things under her position, and this is a, this is an advisory board for the Sustainability Director. And I, I understand your point.
Well-
And I think we should consider them and have that as part of the conference.
I'm, I'm just going back, I'm just going back to what I knew the EFTF to have done and, and so-
Yeah.
So that's just, just my take on this. And I, I, it doesn't mean that these things are bad objectives, they're certainly worthy objectives, it's just that, you know, can you do it all?
Other comments?
Brian Folds, 33 Riverdale, former member of the Energy Task Force. Is this close enough? Get as close as I can.
No speakers in here, that's just, that's good.
Oh, so I'm screaming at everybody on TV? Oh, wonderful.
We have to reject everyone in the audience here.
Sure. So as a, you know, I, I was there for all the meetings, and, and I kind of have an idea of what we had hoped the, the follow-on committee would be. And it's kind of similar to what we were. It is a, our, our goal was to take a bunch of separate initiatives that were going on throughout town and kind of create a framework for how they could work together and get prioritized to move things forward more efficiently in town. And with, with Kate's new hire and her position, there's going to be many interests pulling at her in different directions. I've heard that one of the things that she's already begun work on is the greenhouse gas inventory, which is a great quantitative way to kind of prioritize efforts. So I would hope that this advisory committee to her role would kind of embody that idea so that it would have a broad enough scope to handle whatever needed to come up, whatever interests were being asked of it at the time, but not be so willy-nilly that it, it gets bogged down in the details. That's, that's my idea.
Well, the committee did, the committee did more than just sort of set strategic directions and get things organized, although it led the town to a very progressive goal as well, so I think-
Yes. We did, we also did quite a lot of research. That's, you know, going out and finding information, but also a lot of surveys and meeting with individuals in town, whether it be the hospital or other business groups, or those that tend to not come to all the meetings, we went out to find them, to ask their interest. That's also another helpful thing, is connections.
Yeah, for sure.
Gary Kleiman, 57 Central Street. I'm co-chair of the Long Range Plan Committee, as well as being on the planning board, but I'm speaking for myself. I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts from the Long Range Plan. I could speak for several hours about what's in the Long Range Plan.
I think we gave a twenty-page memo, we did the same.
Without issuing a spoiler alert, I just wanted to share two thoughts that you will be seeing in June because it reflects, perhaps, on the conversations you want to have about the charge of this committee. And one thought is that a recommendation that will be coming to your board in June is likely to be that the town find a place in municipal government for a transportation planning function. I don't know whether your Sustainability Director is going to be the place in town government where you would find that, or whether it would be Public Works, or whether it would be Department of Planning and Land Management, or whether it won't happen. But just understand that a recommendation, a strong recommendation from the committee is likely to be that you find a place in municipal government for transportation planning. So you might think about that in terms of this charge and where that would go. And the other recommendation that is likely to come to, I don't know who exactly, but would be, probably to you, would be to form a task force. No other committees are being recommended, as far as I know. No other committees or boards will be recommended, except for one task force, to basically review the charge and mandate of all 65 committees and boards. Seriously, to think about consolidation because it is very hard to find people to fill 65 committees and boards. And when you have three or four committees or boards looking at energy, three or four looking at historic resources, three or four looking at housing, three or four looking at natural resources and resiliency and things like that, it's time to think about, could some degree of consolidation take place? So my two thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heard it here first.
Yeah, if you wrote the Long Range Plan with transportation planning, it's surprising to me.
Nor should the review of the committees.
No. You know, that's probably a periodic good thing to do anyway. I mean, you put these committees in place because something new has come up, right?
And then it becomes old.
Then it becomes old, and new one comes on, it's just two clicks to the right, and before you know it, you've got 600 committees.
Or 65.
Or 64.
66. 67.
So, evening, John.
Don't know whether you need any further, or?
So I guess what I'd like to do is, we have written comments, we've had comments. I'd like to, you know, think about how to incorporate them into another version of this. And if you took away something that you thought, you know, we, you feel strongly about, you know, maybe just send me your notes about, and I'll create, I'll grab a second draft. And we'll work with Kate and Kate to see that we make their, Chris, you probably should be involved in that too.
Just send that, just send to you.
Right. Just send to me. And if other, if anyone else has additional comments that we haven't talked about tonight, you want to send me an email, please do so, and we'll consider that in the second, the next draft.
Well, the memo we got from Charlie and his colleagues is pretty explicit.
Yeah. And there's, the letter that came, or email that came earlier today was signed by several people, Fan comics, Charlie Parker, Bujah Cookman, and Warren.
Yeah. A lot of progress.
Yeah.
So we will move on. We've got two, hopefully, quick items. One is to confirm the 2018-19 board liaison. Hopefully, everybody's got a copy of those, and if people are satisfied, we can keep this, and if not, we're holding peace.
Linda, did you get enough variety in the committees that you have here? I'm happy to help out in the swap, if you want to swap.
I think it's gonna be fine.
There are a couple overlaps in terms of reading on nights that may be difficult to
get to all of them, but, you know, I'll do the best I can.
And, and that will be true regardless, because life does get in the way. But, you know, that's where developing relationships with committee chairs and the staff is important.
Good.
So the draft of this will now become permanent. And moving then to item 14, which is the review of the board meeting schedule. Obviously, subject to change if necessary along the way, but this gives us a pretty good idea of the meetings and when they will leave. People comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with it, which we often don't meet. One of the August ones, so just, we usually need to make one of those, but we usually don't pass up the, until we get a question.
Is there, may I just ask, as a new person here, is it usually the second one that gets canceled, or it doesn't, can't predict?
I think it's usually-
Yeah, you can't predict.
What the business is.
Yeah, okay.
But if you have an issue with it.
A preference.
That will help us figure it out.
Achieving quorum is always a, a good goal.
Exactly.
Ready for public comments, if anybody has them? Yes, please. Forward.
Hi, Carlin Reed, 83 Witsand. I'm a member of the PEG Access Advisory Committee. And I can't speak for the committee itself because we haven't officially met yet, but I have, speaking on my own behalf, a couple of updates for the, for the select board. We are expecting the, the school committee to appoint its person, probably May 20th, I think, is when the school committee is going to be making their selection, because we have the Carlisle Town Election coming up tomorrow, and that's when they'll have the full regional school district board. With the school committee appointment, we will be reaching our fourth member, and that will be a forum, and hopefully be able to have a meeting. I have suggested and floated an idea for a tentative date for that first meeting of June 14th, and I've spoken to Andrew about it. It would be here in this room, 7:00 PM to 8:30. That's roughly what we expect to do. We'll see how things actually turn out, but that's my target. Also, in the meantime, I've been doing a little bit of training for myself. I went to a PEG Access training program last week, which was, what is quite insightful. And I have a number of ideas that I'm eager to share at appropriate moments. The most important items that I've, that I've learned are two things. One, it's extremely important for a PEG Access organization to maintain the corporate formalities, including following one's bylaws. I'll be looking at this in particular, because I have some questions about that aspect. And the other aspect was, it's important to make sure that you're watching what you actually broadcast, because you don't want to violate any copyright laws. That was another area of discussion. In addition to doing this PEG Access training program, I also just now came from a meeting of the Council on Aging board members. They just met today at 5:30. And I got a little bit of an earful of complaints about the way the PEG Access program is being run, because it's not airing the, the programs in appropriate and prime time slots for the elders who want to watch, not just on video-on-demand, but actual live programming. So programming time slots is an issue that I'm learning about. I'm also learning that there is a designation within the Comprehensive Long Range Plan called Age Friendly Designation.
Age Friendly?
Age Friendly Designation, it's a new, a new piece. And that as an age-friendly designation community, a public access is a component of that. So it's becoming important within that, that sector. I'm not quite sure what that designation is, it's the first time I've heard about it. But it is a, a piece of it.
I assume that's a seniors-based, age-friendly, not, not a-
Age-friendly community, you see the designation.
Right, I'm just, I think it goes- Versus children.
Hi, we just received that designation a few months back. It's through AARP. We work- We worked with the Planning Department and the Council on Aging and Human Services. And so what that does is, it talks about all different aspects of the community walkability, public transportation, which the T is helpful in that aspect, you know, ability to have active and open recreation, walking without barriers, curb cuts, I mean, it goes through...
Is this something we saw?
Yes, it was something we saw, because it opens us to a great deal of other branches that we can, we can come up from that, including, you know, free access to different types of trainings, or things that we can do with our social workers, and then down the line, grants for improvements, grant funding for improvements, both in programming and in infrastructure.
Oh, great. Congratulations on that.
The Council on Aging is all over that, so Linda, you'll have a wonderful time exploring that particular aspect when you have that, that new designation. And the other complaint that I heard from the Council on Aging concerns Comcast's service interruption complaint list. There, it has not been addressed. So in doing so, while I'm waiting for the committee to form, I'm starting to reach out and explore this, this particular charge that we've been giving. Now, that's it for my update. Do you have any questions?
So I'm sorry, are you saying that you were hearing a number of complaints about interrupted service that had been...
From Comcast's. This is the Comcast portion, not the PEG Access, but Comcast cable TV service not repairing downlines, say, oh, perhaps after storms.
Frustration with Comcast's ability to...
Correct, correct. So that will be another area that will be explored when we have the opportunity.
So you're just bringing that to the attention of the town manager, it's not something you or the committee have been worried about?
Actually, it is part of our charge, to be looking at the Comcast complaints and evaluating Comcast performance under the franchise agreement. How deeply we delve in that will be another matter to discuss, and we look forward to exploring that area to some degree.
All right.
Thank you so much. Committee Liaison Reports. Linda, I don't know if you were able to make any of them, because you hadn't really been on Liaison.
No, I did get to the Harvard Housing Authority, and other than the upcoming vote that the town manager already mentioned, there was nothing new to report at this time.
I attended my first HATCH meeting, which was very interesting. There was a presentation by the head of Masport, and the director of the Logan was there, and the director of Hanscom was there. It was pretty interesting, and nothing really, the only thing to really report is probably not new to anybody who's got me since I was a little kid. Was, was a lot of talk over the last number of years about increasing commercial activity at Hanscom, and that seems to be kind of comprehensively resolved. Worcester is now sort of the D R board, and they talked about JetBlue having service from Worcester Mall, JFK directly, and American Airlines coming in as some direct flight. I don't remember where, probably G R two, but that looks to be the next regional, regional airport they're going to use. Our community does, it's a good reason. But it was an interesting meeting.
I attended the dog park feasibility study. They're preparing for a public meeting on May twenty-second that will be held at the room here at seven PM. And they were talking about publicizing it and organizing the presentation, so stay tuned for that.
And I was forward to engaging in a number of my new committees. I think several of the updates, especially those from Rail Trail, given by the town manager. It's always nice to have the town manager cover your updates. And I have to confess, I had a, I was attending the junior class awards of the NRC. I had some life events that were corresponding with a number of my committees, which don't always happen, but not, not a problem to have.
Well, we also had the Agon Pond.
Well, I was gonna go, yes, and that was...
Many of us were at it.
And I forgot to report that I also attended the School Committee meeting. A very full agenda of the Financial Advisor Advisory Committee, and the auditors, as they work for you on Monday, the twenty-third, they were at the School Committee on the following day.
So I also attended a number of meetings. I think many of us were not at the recent hearing. We're also at the Comprehensive Long Range Plan, but we're hearing interesting comments. I think that's probably informing someone to the way that Gary's moving forward to the next meeting, moving forward to the next iteration of the draft plan. Probably the most interesting meeting for me this week, the last two weeks, was attending the National Disability Association, the public, as the Policy Committee of Public Works Transportation and Public Utilities. So here's a little update. The House approved a one-year, two-hundred-million-dollar Chapter Ninety bond bill. The Senate had approved something bigger, and that scaled back from the final joint committee meeting. The omnibus, omnibus energy legislation, you've probably read a little bit about this. It has moved out of the Senate Committee on Climate Change and Global Warming, and it's now the State Ways and Means. So that means that there are a lot of parts that are moving forward, which could be really good for our agenda as well. It gets to many parts of expanding clean energy, climate adaptation, emissions reductions, and energy efficiency, planning and implementation projects, and making money available for communities to do that. We're also looking at making, developing new regulations, stronger regulations than the current Global Warmest Solutions Act. That will help us advance our climate preparedness, climate goals. And then the last side to this was the Energy Bond Bill, which Governor Baker signed. It was a one-point-four-billion-dollar B, environmental bond. And in it are three-hundred million dollars for infrastructure improvements to adapt to and mitigate the effects of climate change, a hundred-and-seventy million for infrastructure for, among other things, nature-based climate resilience solutions, and a hundred-and-thirty million for new initiatives, like the vulnerability preparedness program that we have just applied for grants to. So those were the highlights of those. And they're clearly seeding the, a lot of this work for climate resiliency, climate mitigation in the public works, who are building our roads and building our infrastructure to help us manage. So that was probably the best meeting. Oh, and one last conversation, I thought I'd circulate for you guys. Something, maybe you know about, called Small Cell Technology. You know what that is? I didn't know what that was before.
Probably a small cell.
Yeah. So Boston now has more than one thousand small cell, you could probably help me instead, Carlin. Instead of erecting big cell towers, they're putting tiny cells all over the place. All over the place. They're putting them on streetlights. And so what they're trying to do, the thing is, the goal is to have these smaller cells every five hundred feet, so that you can seamlessly be on your cellphone, or, you know, data searching while you're walking down the busy streets in Boston, be able to have access.
Get out of the car.
So it was an interesting techno, an interesting conversation about something I didn't know about, and some of the communities that are represented on this advisory, on this policy committee were a bit skeptical about, you know, whether that's something that smaller towns want to adopt, but it is something that the industry would like to see moving forward. And they're starting with the bigger cities where, you know, there's an interest in...
And they are studying the safety or health issues of those, as I understand. I think there is a committee set up to kind of analyze whether that's safer, if you will, than up bigger towers that are more intense and therefore project more radiation.
Well, there was a conversation about, and there is a committee that was being established to review the impact of radio frequency and electromagnetic fields, but, and maybe, are you saying there's a subcommittee that...
I don't know, no, I'm not saying.
That's a separate committee we've got together.
Yeah, I don't know about the technical. So this may be something we hear about in town, the council comes in. And so far, what we've been hearing is that in Boston, the companies are not necessarily playing nice and co-locating on the white poles or the utility poles in Boston.
But I'm not a parking...
I think that's probably the highlights of my week.
Okay, well, like just now, we are ready for committee nomination.
Ms. Lynch Corresponds, they are...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, if I pass, I do have something, so I don't know what anybody else has at this point, I'd like to... I received a letter from Bill Montague suggesting that as a town or a board, we should honor outstanding independent retailers in Concord. He suggested four. One's been here for a hundred-and-eight years, the other eighty-three, another seventy-three, and Veral Farm, a hundred years this year. What I suggested, and I said, have Mike, who's kind of been organizing the businesses, kind of look into this and see what sort of structure or guidelines you might want to have.
Happy to, I think it's a really good idea to recognize retailers, especially folks that have been around for a long time, so I'll be happy to do that in the next effort in the Toronto Center.
And so what is it, how would we do that?
Proclamation.
Can I do something just annually to recognize some number of retailers, or those who've been here for, I don't know.
So what happens when we run out of the, you know...
We start over.
We're curious. We're just curious. We did two yearly.
We'll get Bill by the end of the ten.
I did, I'd love to draw the attention, in fact, Brian was here, but he's just left. He provided us with a very extensive report on, from, well, his synopsis of the Mass Division of Energy Resources final report on the electric school bus pilot that Concord participated in. And we are continuing to work with DDR on piloting vehicle-to-bus and vehicle-to-grid functionality over the next year. And I will just quickly surmise that in addition to Tom's amusement on the fact that while the electric vehicles were known to be so quiet, the assumption that the kids riding in our electric school bus would, would be quieter as well, that did not actually prove to be true. And as a mother of, you know, high school-aged child now, it doesn't surprise me at all. But it also, the overall takeaway I had was, we were ahead of the path, we're still ahead of the path. In fact, I think we were ahead of the technology. And there are some bumps being worked through, but I think that we're in a really good position in Concord to be considered as a, as an early adopter.
And it's strong, usually.
Yeah, exactly. So I imagine that, again, that vehicle-to-bus and vehicle-to-grid options, which I hope that the transportation suggestions from the Comprehensive Long Range Plan will think through. The only concern I noted here that is of significance here, and I don't think that this board can do anything about it, but we might want to share our thoughts with our fellow school committee members, is that the greatest opportunity right now identified for money going towards new electric school buses is coming through the Volkswagen settlement, and is aimed at a replacement of the oldest diesel with, therefore the dirtiest diesel, with new electric. And because of, because of the availability of that, and our retirement schedule and replacement, we could easily get ahead of the access to that by replacing our old diesels more quickly. And maybe some creativity on our end might delay the replacement in a way that might allow us to take advantage of that, thereby moving towards an all-electric bus fleet faster.
Did we just buy six new diesel buses?
We did, but apparently we have a very aging fleet, and there's a, there's a timeline established. But I think that there's been discussions about leasing options, for instance, for some of our buses, maybe that's a way to think through opportunities not to purchase until there's, there's new technology that they're available.
Sounds like perfect for the transportation plan.
I was imagining with that. I had to work with Wayne Booth over at schools, and so that's mine.
Okay, I just...
One other thing for...
Yes.
Whatever support for the MDP program?
Yes, there's a motion to, there is a municipal vulnerability preparedness program that...
Right.
So I move to authorize the chair to sign and transmit a letter of support for the town of Concord's application to municipal vulnerability preparedness program.
All in favor?
Aye.
All for the sign. Okay, I guess we need that second? No. Okay. Now we move to nominations.
Okay, so we nominate Nathan Rose Det of one fifty-one Hubbard Street to the Planning Board, Robert Abraham of eighty-one Plainfield Road to the Hugh Parker Cardwell Trust Committee. That does not require a second.
And I have actually three nominations for the West Concord Cultural District, which we're going to extend the agenda to include. I nominate Amy Kaiser of two ninety-four Commonwealth Avenue to the West Concord Junction Cultural District. I nominate Kate Yoder of seventy-nine Deergrass Lane to the same committee, and Anne Sussman of five thirty-four Old Marlborough Road to that committee.
How many do we need on the committee?
We need one more, and that is a core committee.
So we have four?
Yes. No, we were, actually, we have three. It's a committee of nine.
We have about six on the twenty-first.
Oh, one more for Saturday.
So three, plus these four.
Right.
Yeah. Committee appointments.
I move to appoint Ellen Putt of two twelve Caterina Heights to the Commission on Disability for a term to expire May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Happy Golar to, of the six oh-six Old Dedrick Road to the Agriculture Committee as a full member for a term to expire May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And Joanne Lovejoy of sixteen eighty-nine Minus Street to the Agriculture Committee as an associate member for a term to expire May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we have a motion to adjourn to...
I move to adjourn to executive session for land acquisition, collective bargaining, and, boy, contracts not to return.
Second.
And the executive sessions needed to protect strategy discussions affecting litigation on the stated matters. This requires a roll call vote. Linda?
Aye.
Mike? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.